In here, which is great. We have a great participation so far. So I'm just going to wait until it looks like everyone's in and then I will start. All right. So I think we've got all 300 of our participants in and which is wonderful. So hi, everyone, and welcome to the first of three Albemarle County School Board Town Halls related to reopening schools. We really thank you so much for joining us today. I think it's wonderful that we have so many people here. And I want to introduce Graham Page and Kate Acuff, who are both members of the Albemarle County School Board, and also our guest, Dr. Denise Bonds, who's the Director of the Thomas Jefferson Health District. My name is Helen Dunn, and I'm the Public Affairs Officer for Albemarle County's Public Schools. And I'm just here to serve as a moderator during this town hall, in which we'll be discussing the many issues related to decision making around reopening Albemarle County Public Schools in the face, of course, of the COVID-19 pandemic. So these town halls are really meant to be a forum for school board members to hear participants' concerns with regard to promoting the safety of our students, teachers, and staff, and providing the best educational experience reasonable under the circumstances. And our school board members are here to listen to you and to gather information that they can use in making their decisions about whether ACPS opens virtually or with some in-person instruction. Additionally, Superintendent Dr. Matt Haas and members of his cabinet are in attendance and can help answer questions where it's useful. We're all very happy to be here and have a chance to engage with the public on the very important question of how ACPS starts the school year in September. I want to take a minute to explain how this town hall will work. The session is scheduled for technically 60 minutes with the option to extend to 90. So we're calling it 90 minutes. And first on our agenda is a brief presentation by Dr. Bonds, which we hope will give everyone a sense of the medical and epidemiological considerations of COVID-19 for our community and on the reopening of schools. Participants will have the opportunity to ask Dr. Bonds' questions at the conclusion of her presentation. After that, our board members will provide brief updates on where they are in the planning process. Then we'll open the floor up to comments from participants. So if you'd like to make a comment or ask a question, we request that you use the raise hand function on Zoom. And if you've never used that before, it's at the bottom of your Zoom screen on the menu under Participants List. So what will happen if you raise your hand, I'll call on people in order and subsequently unmute them. You'll have two minutes to speak once you've been caught on. So please keep your comments respectful and brief. We also ask that at this venue, people limit their questions to issues of more generalized import rather than those that apply only very specifically to their family, to your families. And we may not be able to answer all of your questions. Obviously, COVID is a moving target right now. But we are taking note of all questions that get asked and those that have been submitted to me previously. And we're putting together an FAQ for the website. So you'll have the option of taking a look at any questions that have been submitted that you don't necessarily hear answers to here. We do want to hear your family-specific concerns and questions, and simply ask that you send those directly to Division's personnel or to schools specifically if helpful. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Denise Bonds of the Thomas Jefferson Health District.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here today. I thought what I would start with is running through a few statistics. Most of these can be found on either our website or the state website, but I think it's useful to make sure that we're all working on the same page and then talk specifically about children in schools. And then I'm happy to answer any questions. Right now, in our district, we have over 1,500 of cases of COVID-19 that have been diagnosed with 129 individuals that have been hospitalized and unfortunate 30 fatalities. In the county of Albemarle specifically, we have 671 cases, 50 individuals have been hospitalized, and an unfortunate 10 fatalities. If we look just at children in our area, in the Albemarle area, we've had 32 children between the ages of 0 and 9 have been diagnosed with COVID and 56 between the ages of 10 and 19. That represents 5 and 7.4% of cases in the district respectively, not Albemarle, but the district. That pretty much mirrors what we're seeing in the state for children, 0 to 9. There've been 2,800 cases of COVID-19 diagnosed in children between the ages of 10 and 19, 6,100. So again, that's for the state, 3% of COVID cases have been between 0 and 9 and 8% between 10 and 19. Relatively few hospitalizations, and in our district, no fatalities amongst children at this point in time. I think it's important to point out that this disease does impact communities of colors disproportionately amongst our cases. 17% of the cases have been amongst African Americans and 30% amongst Hispanics. 44% of our hospitalizations have been individuals who are African American and 19% have been individuals who are Hispanic. And amongst individuals who have died from the disease, 28% were African Americans. Specifically with children and complications, we have not noted any cases of multi-system inflammatory syndrome. This is the syndrome that we rarely see in children where they often require hospitalization and have a very large inflammatory response. So no cases in our district. There have been eight cases in the state of Virginia. We have had two outbreaks in educational facilities. I can't really provide any more detail other than that because of privacy concerns and because the Commissioner has not allowed us to release any specific information about educational facilities. Across the state, there have been 112 cases in the educational facilities and no deaths. Again, I don't, I actually for the state, don't have any other specific details. Testing is available in the district and it is available for children. Although, if you listen to the Board of Supervisor meeting yesterday for Albemarle, you did hear me speak about the difficulty that we are having at this point in time. Test resulting is delayed. It is now taking somewhere between five and 14 days to get test results back from commercial labs because of the increased demand that's being caused by use in our southern half of the nation and the large outbreaks that we're seeing there. We do continue to provide testing across the district. This district is fortunate to have received a private grant that has allowed us to conduct testing throughout the district, and we will test anybody over the age of six. UVA continues to assist us. I think we've got a workaround. Again, if you listened to the board meeting yesterday, there were some concern because the state will not pay for the tests that UVA does. So I think we've come up with a not ideal, but a functional workaround to move forward so that we can continue to use that valuable asset, as we refer to it, of having people out from UVA testing in the community. And again, Centerra Martha Jefferson has been providing community testing through the month of July. And additionally, I'd like to really give my thanks to the number of pediatricians in our community that have been providing testing to kids and really thank them for doing that. Overall, our rate of positivity in the district is 6.5 today. That's a seven-day moving average, so every day it changes. So what I say today may not be the same as what I say tomorrow. And for Albemarle, it's seven, and that is the PCR, the more sensitive test looking for RNA. The state has issued guidance for schools on what they should do based on the phase that the state is in, and I just remind everybody that we are currently in Phase 3 at this point in time. So in Phase 1, the Governor asked that all schools close or move to a virtual environment, but special ed and childcare for working families could remain open for in-person. Phase 2 was Phase 1 plus preschool through 3rd grade, English learners, and summer camps. And now Phase 3, again, the phase that we are currently in across the state, is that all students may receive in-person instruction as can be accommodated with physical distancing. So now I'm going to put a big caveat because I'm going to talk about children and COVID. And as has already been alluded to, every day I learn something new about COVID-19. And so I'm going to give the knowledge about kids and what we recommend as of today. But just as an example, the CDC just this week changed its guidance from how we release individuals from isolation from 72 hours symptom-free, fever-free, to 24 hours. That's a pretty substantial change. They had very good guidelines for doing that, but that's just a demonstration of the moving target that this is. And so I'm going to give you what I know right now, but tomorrow it may be different. So what we know now is that children at all ages are at risk for COVID, but they appear to have fewer complications, with the exception of those very small number who get the multi-system inflammatory disease. So they tend to handle it very well, and they tend to have fewer complications and tend to require fewer hospitalizations should they become infected. There are lots of hypotheses about why that is, and I'm not going to go into those today because I'm not a pediatrician nor am I a specialist in the physiology, physiology of that infectious process. So the symptoms that we see in children are similar to the symptoms that we see in adults, although some studies, and again, we have imperfect knowledge about this, seem to show more GI symptoms and lower fever or less incidence of fever, or the fever appears later in disease, depending on which study you look at. There is no specific medical treatment for COVID infections in children, and the treatments that we have for adults are still very much experimental with some very preliminary results, I would say, in comparison to other well-established medications for other diseases. So the primary thing that we do for kids who get sick is to provide supportive care, to provide fever-lowering medications, make sure they're well-hydrated, comfortable, and watch out for potential complications, which again, are quite rare in children. So that's kind of an overview of how COVID affects children. Adults and schools, of course, are comprised of both children and adults. Adults are much different. We see a much higher rate, particularly as adults get older, of complications associated with COVID-19. We see a higher rate of individuals, particularly as we start to get to that 55, 60 and older range group, or people who have other comorbidities such as diabetes and heart disease, to have complications that may require them to be in the hospital, may require supportive oxygen, may require the use of anticoagulant medications to keep blood clots from forming, may require significant supportive care. So adults are really at a higher risk than children of having those complications of disease. So now let's talk a little bit about what are the recommended safe practices. So there have been a number of organizations that are really experts in pediatrics that have put out some guidelines. The American Pediatric Association has put out guidelines. The CDC has guidelines for schools. And just this week, or late last week, the National Academy of Sciences held a series of meetings with experts in the pediatric and infectious disease and school area to talk about best practices for reopening schools in the current pandemic. So these are some of the things that they have recommended, and they come from all of those different recommendations. So the first is, schools really need to establish and create a culture for maintaining health. We need to train staff and students and teachers on what the symptoms of disease are, what other illnesses' symptoms are that may occur at the same time of COVID, and then what to do if we see children or staff members with that. And I think I have certainly heard plans about what Albemarle is going to do if they have a sick child or a sick staff member. So I think that that's well in the works here. School districts need to normalize mask-wearing and social distancing. My kids are beyond the little kid stage, but I'm told by pediatrics and pediatricians and experts in this area that if you make it the normal thing for kids to do, they will wear masks. And I recognize that that's a challenge as you get into the really preschool-age years, but I think we can go a long way towards normalizing that, and that means adults have to model that behavior for kids. And then finally, we need to make it okay to be ill. We need to get rid of perfect attendance awards and make sure that staff and teachers model appropriate behavior by staying home when that's ill and that we allow staff to really use that sick time and not pressure them to come to work when they're ill. And that creates a resource problem for schools to make sure that schools and cafeterias and front offices are staffed with appropriate people. So I recognize there is burden associated with that, and all of those organizations that I mentioned recognize that there is burden. Some other considerations that are put forward that will lower this, and then I'm really going to stop at this here and turn it back over to the board. First of all, if school is to be held in session to really work on cohorting kids in small groups and limit the use of shared spaces. So small groups of students that stay in their classroom, go out to the playground together, and try and bring resources to the students. So can meals be brought to the student classroom? Library time, is there a way to bring those books to the student classroom? And then if you are in a situation where normally students would rotate to different classrooms, can you instead keep the students in the same classroom, rotate faculty between? Really expand your use of outdoors. We know that this is a disease that's spread through aerosolization, and by being in the outdoors where we have good air current and good ventilation, that lowers the risk to all students. And, you know, frankly, we all feel better if we're outdoors playing. And then cleaning ventilation is important, but it's not sufficient. So it's not sufficient to improve or increase your cleaning frequency. It's not sufficient to change your ventilation strategy to bring more fresh air. And it's certainly important, and to the degree that it's possible, would certainly encourage that, but you cannot just do those without also thinking about social distancing, mask-wearing, small cohorts. And then the final suggestion that I think is a really great one is to really establish a multi-stakeholder task force to really weigh and determine best options so that we make sure that we are considering all of the views and all of the impacts across the stakeholder groups. So that could include staff, teachers, parents, I think kids to a degree that they can participate in this, plus other members of the community as is appropriate. And there are some suggestions about who might be on there. So I'm going to stop now. That's some data, some information about COVID, and some potential suggestions about moving forward should in-person instruction be adopted.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bonds. That's a really helpful and enlightening presentation. And I wonder if you have a few minutes that you could just answer a few questions from our audience members, our participants? That'd be great. Thank you. Before I do that, I just want to remind people that if you want to just make a comment or ask a question, that you'll go down to your Zoom menu and click on Participants List, and then that'll give you an option to raise your hand. So if you'll just raise your hand, and remember to try to keep your comments and questions as brief as possible.
Hello?
Yes, I think you're up.
Okay. Now, initially, you said that we were going to go through all the speakers and then address questions, so my question is going to maybe move a bit beyond what she just spoke to. But are we changing? Can I just go make my comment?
Yeah, for now, we're just going to keep questions limited to questions specifically for Dr. Bonds, and that'll just be, you know, a brief opportunity to speak directly with her about what she just presented from the Thomas Jefferson Health District and more sort of scientific and health-related information. If you have questions or comments specific to school board members, then yeah, I think it would be ideal if you would just hold that for a little bit later, please.
Okay, well, my only concern is we're 10 of 1, so I'm not quite sure how we're going to, you know, have time in 60 minutes for me to actually address my question if we're at this point already.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks so much for expressing that concern. And we actually do have an extra 30 minutes that we can extend into, which in case we need to, which I think very much might be the likelihood here. So, you know, if you have, like I said, questions for Dr. Bonds right now, please go ahead and ask that, and then you'll have plenty of time afterwards. We're going to limit the amount of time that she speaks or answers questions here. And then our board members are only going to speak very briefly, so you really will have plenty of time to make comments.
Okay, that's fine. If I could just move to the top one week, because I work, so I've only got till 1:30, so I'll see how this goes, okay?
Thank you so much.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
What is the recommendation for children with asthma and COVID with school?
So that's a great question. I don't, you know, certainly if there is a child that has a high-risk condition, immunocompromised, you know, asthma, the recommendations have been to stay home, to really do virtual school to avoid the risk associated with that. So I think that would be something that you would want to talk to your pediatrician about and determine if the condition that your child has is significant enough that whether or not the exposure is. And my understanding is that schools are providing, and this is a question really to go back to the board, a virtual option, because there will be a number of kids because of their medical condition that can, could not participate even in Phase 3 in-person.
Okay.
And I will just say, no, go ahead.
My other question is, is that if you have more than one child, do you keep all of them in virtual instead of bringing the others in and out to school?
Yeah, so another great question, because of course, the kids that are attending school then present an exposure risk for your child who cannot attend school. And again, I think that's going to depend on how significant the comorbidity or illness of your, the at-risk child is. If it's such that it would really be disastrous, so taking your child out of the situation. So you have a kid who has cancer and is on chemotherapy and has a really suppressed immune system. I think, you know, pediatricians likely would recommend that all members of the family stay home to the degree possible to really limit the risk to that child. But there might be other situations where you want to limit the risk to the child, but the risk is such that that additional risk of having children attend school can be accepted. So, you know, there's going to be a lot of case-by-case basis, and it's really going to be hard to provide very specific guidance for each case without knowing the specifics. And that's where your pediatricians are really the best guide for you at this point in time.
Okay.
I would add, if people, I don't know if you're using the group chat box, but if you are and people put questions there, I'm happy, once the board members start, to try and answer questions via the chat.
I've already been. Yeah, please, please do feel free to include questions or comments that you may have in the chat box, and I will keep a record of those so that we can, you know, consider all of those later as necessary. But that goes for the rest of this town hall meeting. Thank you.
Should I go? I've been unmuted already. Okay. So I teach severe and profound special needs, and so you mentioned a lot of like adults versus children versus people of other nationalities. But I guess mine's more of a comment is that I think also what should be considered is not just special ed, but specifically, I know we're kind of a small little population, but the severe and profound special needs. I've seen a lot of articles and data that the mortality rates for, not just because they have intellectual disabilities, but the fact that they tend to have more underlying conditions. There's a higher mortality rate for them. And then I heard you mention normalizing wearing masks, especially, I have a child who just left kindergarten, and he is very moldable, so I could see him getting used to it. But normalizing anything with severe and profound special needs is like, is wearing masks being normalized, I don't know, like, whether that's plausible or not. And when I was given the survey the other day of, you know, the different scenarios, the final scenario of attending school full-time included the phrase "following CDC guidelines." With severe and profound special needs, that's going to be a different world, a different, a whole different, you know, situation.
Those are all great points. And again, what we were talking about are some population-based strategies, and I think you're talking about a very specific segment of the population where likely things would have to be very tailored. I would also be remiss, though, in saying that that also illustrates kind of the importance of having kids in school as well, because there are certain services that kids get that they can only get or most easily get in the school setting. And so that is what makes this a really challenging decision to move forward with. So thank you for those comments. I think you point out that there's not going to be a one-size-fits-all. We really have to look at everyone's individual situation. And certainly, the chat box has got a million questions, but I'll do my best there.
And I think just in terms of time, since we will be ending this at 2:00 p.m., if we could have two more questions, and I know we have a few people in the queue for questions, if we could have two more questions now that will be asked right now to Dr. Bonds, and then from there, please do feel free to include any questions that you may have in the chat box, and I will make sure to submit any that are specifically designated for her. I'll make sure that they get to her, and we really appreciate everyone. Thank you. All right.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Great. Dr. Bond, in the Fairfax County Public Schools Board meeting, the person from their health department stated that families are not required and cannot be made to be required to alert a school if their child has been diagnosed with COVID-19. I wanted to know, is that true? And if so, how will people absolutely know they have been exposed? How will we know if it is happening in our schools? And how will other students, staff, and family members be safe?
So great questions. And yes, I will confirm that there's no law that says that if your child has a communicable disease, whether that's COVID, or mumps, or chickenpox, or measles, that you must call the school and let them know. The Department of Labor did just release emergency COVID guidelines that say that an employer must let other employees know if there's a COVID case. But that's a workplace, not a school. And again, it requires the employer to know about that. So when we, all, we, all positive lab results are reported to the health department. And it actually happens electronically 99% of the time. Labs that run the test... of the time. Labs that run the test send those to our data system automatically every night and sometimes several times a day. We then call the case and do a large case investigation. And we really try and get permission from those individuals to speak to their contacts, and that would include schools for children, or staff members, or teachers, to let them know and to, to share at least that there has been a case, and hopefully to share the name of the individual. And this is a privacy rule that the state has. I cannot override that privacy rule. That's not a power that I have as a local health director. It's reserved to the state health commissioner. So having said all of that, I will say that probably 90% of the time, people really understand the importance of letting others know that they've been ill, so that they can quarantine and do the right thing. So it's very rare that we don't get permission from an individual to share that information with the appropriate contacts. So that would include schools. So it is, that is a true statement. I think the reality is that very rarely happens. The other thing that I will say is that the state is now pilot testing an app called COVID Wise that you can download. And as long as, my understanding is, as long as you have your Bluetooth on, it, in an anonymous and private way, keeps track of other phones in the area. And if you get diagnosed with COVID, you can go into the app and say, oh, my gosh, I've been diagnosed with COVID. And then that app will send out email messages or text messages, I think, to all of the phones that you were in contact with for a long enough period of time. It was in the beta test mode. I don't know if it's been rolled out statewide yet or not, but it will be soon. That won't really help kids so much, although many kids have phones. But it is another way that you might anonymously find out that you've been a potential contact. So.
Okay, so it's not, that, thank you, that was very helpful. But just to double-check, so you're saying it is not a guarantee that students or staff will know that they've been exposed?
That is correct. But I guess I'll point out, I'm going to point out that every time you go to the grocery store, or go out to any community event, or eat at a restaurant, you could be being exposed to COVID.
A lot of us have been avoiding that because of family health concerns. So that's why I wanted to know if that would change in a school setting. But I do really appreciate you being really honest and really thorough in kind of explaining the protocols and kind of the, the general outline. I really appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, we're just going to have one more question for Dr. Bonds, and then we will have more opportunities to, for comments from everyone. And please remember, feel free to, to put questions in the chat box. All right.
Oh, me. Hello. I just want to make sure, Dr. Bonds, that I, that I heard this correctly and put it together correctly. I think I heard you say that in schools, it's more likely that the 55 and older staff population that we have, they would be more likely to have COVID than children. But yet, the recommendation is for the teacher, for the students to stay in one place, and the teacher to rotate through the classes that she's responsible for, therefore exposing her to more children. Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah. So let me spend a little more time on that. I think if you're in an elementary, people who are over the 55, 60, 65, we see more complications. And that is where we see the hospitalizations and the adverse outcomes. So that is absolutely true. Children seem to either be infected less or handle it less, or handle it better if they are infected. The recommendation to rotate around, if you're in an elementary school, it's likely that you would not need teachers to move around very much, because there really is a primary teacher, unless schools have changed dramatically, that provides most of the instruction for that. And so it would be things like art, I think, music, although singing would be an activity that we probably would want to think carefully about, because it causes lots of aerosolization when you sing. And, you know, to the degree that the homeroom teacher can do all of those activities and those specials in elementary, I think would be great and would limit the risk. I think where it becomes really complicated is in high school, where if I'm the homeroom teacher, and I happen to be a specialist in English, my ability to teach calculus is probably
Right.
a little limited. And so then, that's, that's a risk. The advantage of keeping the kids in that same classroom is you're not contaminating classrooms as they move around. They've only, they're in their little area. So if you have a teacher that's a high-risk individual, and many teachers are in that age bracket or have medical complications, I think there are things that you could think about to be clever, to still get the students that experience and keep the teacher safe. So one, you can really make sure that the teacher has at least six feet of distance if they have to come into the classroom, good hand hygiene, mask, and maybe even a face shield to provide extra protection. The other is maybe you could do virtual instruction. The kids are in the class, but that special teacher is doing it virtually, with the homeroom teacher still there to help keep order and direct questions and deal with that technology. So, yes, there is a risk to having teachers move around like that. I think there are ways to manage that risk. But I'm, I'm not a teacher, and I'm not a school board member, and I don't have to plan. But I just don't see in high school, and maybe to some degree in middle school, how any one teacher could provide all of the instruction that any high school student needs to be successful.
Absolutely.
So, so it's a challenge.
As an elementary school teacher, our biggest fear is just not providing the rich classroom environment that we're used to providing for kids. This, you know, mask-on, straightforward kind of thing makes us very nervous about children's mental health. So thank you. Thank you so much for being with us today. I really appreciate you taking the time to deeply explain things to us.
Sure.
And I thank you too. And I know everyone else, Kate and Graham, both, thank you so much for being here, Dr. Bonds. It's been really helpful. And obviously, you stimulated some great conversation, because our chat box is, is very full right now. And I'm sure you're used to that by now. So thank you so much. We really appreciate you taking the time to do this. And I'll touch base with you soon with some of these questions and just see if we can get any more of the ones that are in the chat box directed to you answered.
That would be great. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Well, I am going now to turn the floor over to Kate Acuff and Graham Page, who are our two school board members here today.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Bonds. You've answered an incredible amount of questions. And I see, like, like Helen said, the chat book, chat box is filled up. I'm Kate Acuff, the school board representative from the Jack Jewett District. And I'm so glad to have the opportunity to hear directly from you. You have some terrific questions already. But I know you have issues of particular concern surrounding the school divisions and the school board's development of options, as well as the decision-making about our schools. First, I want to make you understand that although the school board has decided the first day of instruction will be September 8, to provide more time to prepare. No final decision has been made about how Alamooral County schools will open. This is not an easy decision to make, because everybody agrees that ordinarily, it is best for students' social, emotional, and cognitive development to be in school with the support of their teachers, their peers, other people in the schools. And for many students, even a hello from the bus driver in the morning and at night is something to look forward to. But as you know, these are not ordinary times, and this is not a black and white decision. Ultimately, it will be the school board that makes this decision of how to balance the health risk of coronavirus in our community with the educational mission of Alamooral County Public Schools. We have received hundreds of letters with community members' questions, suggestions, and concerns. And we are genuinely grateful for that input, and we are using it to inform our decisions. I've been impressed with how engaged our community is in our children and our schools. Parents have advocated passionately about their children, or for their children, which is absolutely appropriate. But our rule on the school board is somewhat different. We are currently considering how we can balance the health and educational needs of all of our 14,000 students, or 2,500 employees, and our larger community while having the best possible outcomes, even though we don't always know how to get there. Having said that, we have to acknowledge that we don't know everything today, that we'll know even next week, July 30, when we have our next school board meeting, or by September 8, when instruction is scheduled to begin. So we won't be able to answer every question right now, but we will publicize your answers, answers to your questions as soon as we can, and put them on the website, and keep adding to the chat box with questions if you don't get a chance to ask yours. The questions that have been submitted in writing prior to this meeting will be added to an FAQ sheet, which will be published on our website for reference. And now I hand it over to you, Graham.
Thanks so much, Dr. Acuff. Again, I'm Graham Page, representing the Samuel Miller Magisterial District of Alamooral County Public Schools. I'd like to talk a bit further about the process that we have used as a school board in our decision-making, so that everyone can understand what factors into this process. I'd like to first reiterate that our school division has a fundamental obligation of not only educating our children, but we're also obligated to keeping them safe and healthy. As you know, the coronavirus landscape is dynamic and ever-changing. Our process for coming to a decision about our school's reopening has included closely monitoring the infection rates and levels of risk in our community, and has been premised, premised on these risks remaining low or even improving. The four-part process has been as follows. Part one, planning. In May and June, Alamooral County Public Schools assembled a task force to prepare a plan for reopening that included four areas of focus: healthy environment, healthy staff, healthy students, and healthy learning. In addition to division staff, school principals, counselors, teachers, school nurses, custodians, transportation staff, and many others were part of the working group. We tried to include as many people as possible. Part two of this four-part process, scheduling considerations and updates that provided options given the constraints of transportation and space. Three hybrid operation, options, rather, were presented from this part of the process. Part three, surveys of teachers and parents. And then, as Kate mentioned, part four, the special school board meeting, which will occur on July 30, with an all-virtual option to be presented. As we've worked our way through, through this planning process, through all four steps, we've looked at hybrid learning models and all virtual learning models, focusing on the efforts on high-quality learning outcome for all students. Regardless of the model, model that we do eventually decide on, we will make special provisions for all of our at-risk learners. Additionally, we are maintaining a focus on technology and providing internet and devices for all students, so that all students will have equitable access based on his or her learning needs. So with that, we'd like to open it up for a conversation with our participants. Please remember, as Dr. Dunn has said, to keep your comments brief, so that others have the opportunity to speak if they wish. If you would like to speak, please use the raise-hand function at the bottom of your screen in this Zoom section under participant list. So we are open to hear your comments and to receive feedback from all of you. And again, we are grateful that we have many, so many participants today. Okay, and Dr. Dunn?
Hello?
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Hello? I have a question. Yeah, I have a question. I think it is pretty widely believed that the spring virtual learning experience was inadequate. And I would like to know what, over the last four months, has been done specifically to develop a high-quality virtual learning experience option for the fall? You've had four months to learn and think and develop something better. And I want to know what you have done to create a better option. And then my second question's a very quick one, and that is, will masks be required if school opens in person?
Graham, I can start on that one, if you want.
Okay, yes.
The answer is yes. Masks will be required for teachers and students. And secondly, I absolutely agree. I don't think anybody, anybody in division disagrees that having the school abruptly shift into virtual learning in March was the ideal educational experience. Our teachers are well-trained to utilize IT to support their in-class learning, but they were clearly unprepared to do it 20, you know, every single school day. I don't know, Debbie Collins, the deputy superintendent is on, on as well. But it's also the case that our teachers have undergone a lot of professional development. We have additional software that will support virtual learning in a more robust way. We have ways of making certain we have all students engaged. We, well, Debbie, can you fill, fill me in? I know that we're going to do a, I think the issue of scheduling, there'll be real classes, there won't be just, here's your homework types of situations.
I guess, Dr. Acuff, Debbie Collins, deputy superintendent, we've, we've been, we started professional development the first week of June, as soon as our teachers were available. And we are continuing as of, and doing some today. So we're very much thinking about what a virtual opportunity for students would look like and preparing for that. That's pre-K through 12. We really are trying to think about what that might look like and how teachers would have the, the training and the professional development that they need. We're also, as we move forward, have set aside division time to have that ongoing. Because one of the things we know is that it won't just be one time that teachers need to have some training around the tools, but it'll be ongoing, how they can develop the most robust and rigorous conversations and opportunities for students.
Can you tell us anything more specific about what virtual learning would look like?
I can. And if you'd like to go on to our website that we put up on Monday, it does describe what virtual learning would, would look like in somewhat of a generic term. It will be synchronous. We've, we've put some times around that for different grade groups. And so that, that's spelt out for that. We talked a little bit about how specials in elementary schools would be, happen, and then what the asynchronous part of it would be. That would be the things that students could do when, on their own, and not necessarily in front of a screen. So teachers right now are developing those kinds of schedules that we will be putting out early in August for parents to see what the day would look like and how much flexibility they have in their day and their week.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I've sat in on some of the Zoom sessions for at least two schools. And I know that the staff at those schools are really engaged in coming up with the best plans possible in case we do go virtual. So like Dr. Mrs. Collins is saying, this is a process that all of our staff members and all of our schools are working on.
Hello?
Hello?
Can I go ahead?
Yes.
Yeah. So I don't want to repeat. Kathy, you did an incredible job of basically some. Yeah, so I don't want to repeat. Kathy, you did an incredible job of basically summarizing my concern. I do lean towards a son in high school, which of course I just think we. The online in-person option, I feel like should consider age groups in terms of, you know. Certain students being able to follow masks and stay distanced. But I I just will say that even the response from the superintendents in terms of thinking about. What that will look like and sort of the vague summary of what online learning would think would look like. I do feel likewise that we've had, you know, let's face it, there's going to be online learning and we've known that for quite a while now. And I'm just really, really concerned that we're going to walk into such a muddled mess of what. The engagement is and the use of technology by the teachers, the training they have. And the experience our children have, and I just feel like. I hope we've been leveraging this time and I hope that it's not going to be a sort of test case, you know. And and finally, I would just like to say, I really hope we have a feedback loop. There might be one teacher that is has been even taking it upon themselves to prepare for online learning and is going to really make this. You know, hit it out of the park and there's going to be teachers that are really, it's not going to be, not going to go well, most likely. But I am just asking that there's a feedback loop that we can catch these instances or give feedback early enough. On certain classes that are just underwhelming and clearly not being delivered appropriately online. And I just would ask that that's considered so we don't get too far into the school year and our kids are just bored or not engaged at all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that comment, Ms. Marchelone. And I know that related to the last part of your comment. If you contact your. Teachers of your kids that might, you might be having problems with, that would be one way to solve that problem. And also you could probably contact the principals too, because all of our teachers really are working very, very hard with this process. So they are really all dedicated to doing the very best job that they can if we do go all virtual. So.
I do appreciate that, but my last comment, though, is that the the either the county. Or the school needs to set the guidelines for what online learning is all about, so that it's not a teacher-parent back and forth. I think that there's guidelines on minimum standards of what they should deliver and and therefore we're all singing off the same song sheet. And then it won't be a sort of uncomfortable between us and the teacher. And that's why I think we're asking for more detail is what is the bear, the the standards of online learning? It has to be synchronous. It has to be using, you know, X, Y, Z tools and and that's why we're looking for that detail.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, like Ms. Collins was saying, I think. Staff is in the process of really developing all of that now, so as soon as more and more details are rolled out. We'll probably be posting more of those things on the website. And anything else you could add to that, Kate? You want to jump in here?
No, I mean. I I mean, I know our teachers are determined to make it work. No doubt, there's some going to be some variability, but I think the idea of having guidelines is already in the works. But having a feedback where it's not individually negotiated between a teacher and a parent is also a good idea. Thank you for that comment.
Right. Yeah, and I didn't want to imply that I wanted a confrontation between the teacher and the parent. But I was just making sure that maybe some communication could occur at that level. To make sure that, you know, that would be the beginning of solving the problem, but we would need guidelines too for the entire system. Okay.
Hello, I would like to say as an educator for over twenty years with Alamo County Public Schools. And having had both of my children come through Alamo County Public Schools. I know that you're working very hard to make sure that this unprecedented. Time is being addressed as well as possible. However, there are some considerations that need to be brought to the fore. First of all, there are a wide range of ages of our physical facilities within the county. And consideration must be given to the lack of airflow through many of the classrooms. In which teachers will be expected to teach, even if there are reduced numbers of students. Another thing to consider is that we do not know how many asymptomatic carriers of COVID- nineteen exist. The current outbreaks at two local nursing homes speak to that very fact. So I would, I would encourage you to to consider those those points. And also just to assure any parents that that are on this chat right now. Teachers have been working very hard, even continuing into the summer. To help students in an asynchronous format, using as many tools as we possibly can. To make sure that every single student is getting what they need to complete the work for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. So. I I can assure parents that that we will continue to work as hard as we possibly can. And we'll use every single tool at our disposal to reach every single child.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown, because that testimony about working for, even during the summer to help kids to catch up from last year. It's really good to hear, and I think all of the parents. Should be grateful to hear that you are so dedicated and quite a few other teachers in the county too. In fact, I'd say the vast majority of our teachers really in that same dedicated category. And I know that when the plans were being drawn up. Custodial staff were were being consulted and involved in that process. So I think your concern about the building is being looked at. It's not something that we have forgotten. But I think that has been taken into consideration. And again, Kate, if you have anything else.
I was going, I don't know that that's an excellent question about airflow and air filters. We have an aging. School inventory. I think the average age of our core school is more than fifty years old, so we don't have wide hallways. And and as of a few years ago, not all of our classrooms even had windows. But I know that this is an area of interest and I will be very interested to see what our building services folks come back with us on this. We'll have to post that answer.
Okay, also, in terms of where students would be eating lunch. The whole issue of masks goes right out the window with that because you can't eat and have a mask on. And students will be talking to each other. So if we have students return from the cafeteria with their lunches. And even being socially distanced in a closed classroom. As you said, some classrooms do not have windows. Mine does not. Then airflow again becomes a very critical issue. I live with a family member who is in a high-risk category. And I've already made plans to self-isolate for the entire school year. Because I do not want to bring this home to that family member.
One thing, you're absolutely right. You have to take your mask off to eat lunch. Our students, under all the planning that I have seen, will not be going to the cafeteria. Lunches will be delivered to the room. Which only gets to part of your concern. Obviously, they still will be in a room socially distanced, but they'll have to have their mask off. You know, to the degree weather and space permits, they could be outside, but that is a concern.
Yes, true.
At the high school level, so that that becomes an issue for for all people that are in the the high school areas. And the sizes of the buildings, I'm not quite sure about the logistics of delivering food to every classroom.
Hi, I I'm I'm online. I'm a certified school nurse. For many, many years, but here in Alamo County and Charlottesville, so I know the schools. But what I want to alert everybody is that the Thomas Jefferson Health Department. Is going to be doing surveillance of schools. Um, and the National Educators Union, which was formed sometime in April, I think. They are mapping out different discrepancies throughout the country. I've been on their webinars and I've been trying to sort of help coordinate some of the. Services for home care, healthcare workers, people from the health department. UVA, everything to go actually into each individual school. Because as you teachers are expressing, and I know as a school nurse, there's like no way this virus can be contained. From spreading, absolutely no way. And so they, the health department knows that. What they're doing, and that was on yesterday's Alamo, I'm on all the way, all the Zooms. Because I know, you know, the the situations, I know contagion. Anyway, so yesterday's Alamo County. They had the Thomas Jefferson Health Department on there. And they explained that they're waiting for the numbers to come down, why the testing is so important. If it can come down to like five percent or whatever that number is, they can do some. Bringing back students, but I have to tell you scientifically. I I'm with you, teachers, I'm with you because you're the ones that are going to be sick. And that's what you should be sticking to. There's only one of you in a classroom. We can't, you know, it's kind of like, well, the kids will probably get over it, but no, the teachers who are there. Are usually the ones who get sick every single year. And when I was in Charlottesville schools and Alamo schools. I want to say. That the the main thing that happened there was the H one N one. And when that happened, it took a year, a year for the immunization, and that wasn't deadly. But that made people really sick and they had sort of like a Lyme's disease. You know, after something, you know, lingering thing. So, yeah, we have, we, that's what I wanted to say here today because we really do have to wait for the science. And I also have personal friends who are teachers that are going crazy trying to help. They haven't had a vacation, not one single day. And so they have been just working and trying very diligently. I think you're right to say that. That they they haven't developed the standard so the kids can graduate and stuff like that. But this is an emergency and and thank goodness we have teachers that are dedicated and thank goodness we have a school board that's dedicated. And I think everybody's going to be okay. We just have to relax and let this thing really get tested. Today at Washington Square Park, they're having five to seven and then Friendship Court is open to the public. And they're going to keep testing and once we get the tests and the numbers, that's what we need to come down. Okay, so if you want to open up the schools, listen to the science, listen to the health department and all of this, you can zoom. Okay, I'm sorry, anybody have any questions?
Thank you so much for those.
Yeah, thank you.
Right.
Okay. Just just in response to Ms. Payne's comments. I mean, I I think it is concerning and I also listened to Dr. Bond's presentation at the Board of Supervisors meeting yesterday. Where they showed for the past several weeks, we've had a significant uptick in prevalence of COVID in our community. That's concerning. I am also concerned, particularly after the midsummer's weekend of UVA students. Posted all over what the social social media maskless at parties. We have somewhere, UVA hasn't released a number of students that are going to matriculate in three weeks. But somewhere between five and twenty thousand students will be coming into town from all over the country. I think that that is a genuine. Factor that we need to keep in mind. A challenge will be. In my perspective, if we open, but then we have a spike and have to immediately close. That is one scenario and whether that will be more disruptive than the other. And I don't know yet, and we're just going to have to use our best judgment on that. But infection rates are going up and we have a potential risk for greater infection rates. And the most recent study, the best study we have right now shows that. Children between ten and eighteen transmit the virus at least as readily as adults do. And children below ten transmit infection about half the rate. Whether that's a physiological condition or simply because a five-year-old is shorter than a twenty-year-old. So you're not getting the the droplets as much. It's not known. But there there is a, we have on the school board have to look out both for our students and for our employees. Because without the employees, we can't, we can't do much in terms of educating.
And Ms. Hoffman, again, thanks for your comments because everything that you said sort of highlights how complex this issue is. You're telling us information on both sides of it, so thank you so very, very much for letting us know exactly how. Difficult this decision will be for the school board. Okay, Mrs. Dunn.
We, I think we have Laura Payne. I think you're next in the queue.
No, she just spoke.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 she didn't.
I thought, yeah, yeah.
Um, my question was pertaining to the students who. Opt to do the virtual learning from the beginning. Let's say they do the virtual learning the first semester, but there's changes. There's maybe a vaccine or things have developed where it can be a safer environment. For them, would they be allowed to have the decision to return to school second semester?
I think that might be a Debbie Collins question.
Yeah, Debbie Collins question. Is Debbie still on? I know that there'd be options along the way to sort of change any decision that you might have made. It wouldn't be possibly for an extremely long amount of time that that decision would be, but Debbie might be able to give more of the exact timeline.
Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer. We think Debbie lost power. So the answer is yes, you would have an opportunity if you selected one option to transition to the other. I would just caution, there is a little bit of waiting period as we find a space in a class and if there's transportation and things like that. But the initial decision is not irreversible.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, Ms. Eubanks?
Oh, yes. Yes, okay, um, my guest statement and question is. Are the school board going to take in consideration if going to virtual, the parents that have to work? When they're saying it's going to be, the virtual is going to be in real time. I just want the school board to consider that some parents work seven to three or six to two. And aren't able to be there with their children to do that in real-time virtual learning. And what would be another option for that? And also, will attendance be a factor in that as well?
I think that's an excellent question. Do Debbie or Rosalyn do? I'm not familiar with how the scheduling of the synchronous.
Right.
Learning is. We will have to get back with you, but that's a great question.
Yeah, those are good, you know, really legitimate concerns and we will get back with you on that.
Yes, thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Yes, to kind of go along with the question that was just asked as a household with. Two working parents that go out and serve the community and take care of the members of the community each and every day. And many, many parents in our same situation, we find ourselves in a situation that our children. that our children, um, will be left out with virtual learning. We will not be home to be able to put our children on these virtual options. Um, I can tell you that the ACAC in Charlottesville for summer camp is approximately, it's a little over $300 a week. Multiply that by two kids or however many kids you have, it is financially, um, devastating for families. So I'm concerned about the number of families that I've already spoken with, um, that we, we don't seem to have an optional option in the virtual world. There are lots of families that are, have already had and are planning to unenroll their children. Um, and, you know, I don't know if our children are just going to lose out a year of school or trying to figure out some homeschooling options on the weekends. But how is that going to affect school funding? When I know that a lot of school funds is based on enrollment numbers? Will that affect school funding this year? Will that affect school funding next year? How will that all play into things and how will working parents be able to make this happen?
Again, an excellent question. Uh, I know that, uh, division staff have been talking with, um, have been looking into whether we could provide some childcare or at least for teachers, but, um, and look at talking with some private providers. But that is a huge gap. I, I absolutely agree.
And, and can I ask a question of my children are at summer camp right now? So if we're looking at options of childcare, I'm, I'm unsure of the difference between childcare and school.
That's a good question too. The childcare, I think, would be mostly, at least in my mind, if, uh, like if you'd be at work and your children would have to be in, in school or either at home with virtual learning. Childcare might be needed for part of that time in case you may not be around, uh, at the time.
Yes, I guess my concern is if my child's at childcare with other kids that need childcare, what is the difference between being in childcare or at school like my children are doing right now at summer camp?
Yeah. Very good question and we might have to get back to that too. Because, uh, there's not a lot of difference between those two, but Kate?
In terms of the dis-enrolling or de-enrolling, whatever the word would be, yeah, you are absolutely right. If our state, um, funding is determined by how many, what our census is on September 30th every year. That's what it is historically and it would not affect funding this year. Last year's census affects our, our allocation for 2021 school year. So it would be a lagging impact, uh, for the 21, 22 school year.
School year, right.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, mine too.
Mrs. Rober?
Yeah. So, um, I'd like to talk about the survey that has gone out by email that it says it's due back by July 31st. So I'll say that I get that this whole thing is a moving target. We're all doing the best that we can. The situation may change tomorrow, next week, you know, in the future. So, um, I'm hearing that the information about virtual school will be coming out in early August. And then earlier in this meeting, Dr. Bonds discussed the idea of cohorts and kids, of kids in the school around which the teachers move as much as possible and how that might be easier for elementary than middle school. So in my case, I've got kids in elementary and in middle school. So two different scenarios, um, that vary. And it seems like it's a chicken and egg problem. The school administrators need to know how many kids are going to be in person to create meaningful plans. And parents may be hesitant to make a hard commitment without access to that meaningful plan. So is this survey that we are supposed to return by the 31st, is that, is that my final answer for a understanding that I can transition, but, you know, for some period of time? If, if my final answer isn't this survey due on the 31st, when will that be?
Again, I don't know the answer to that, but I do think you will have an opportunity to change your mind.
Yes, I think so too.
So the 30th, by next Friday, I should be making a determination at least for, you know, the beginning of the school year, this is what I intend for each of my kids?
You should be giving us your best, uh, idea of what your plans are.
Yeah, what your plans would be.
Keeps changing. I know.
What your plans would be.
I don't think you've signed in blood with that. I think you can still change.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lost Helen. Oh, there she is.
Oh, I'm here. So I just want to mention that it's quarter till two right now. And, and I know we, um, we do have several questions still in the queue at this point. Um, so I know we, uh, I, I know a lot of people are still hoping to ask questions. For those of you who are, for whom it's a possibility, it would be ideal if you could put your questions in the chat. I promise I will log all questions and make sure that, that you get, and those, those answers get put in our FAQ, which will be published and that will get out to the community as soon as possible. Um, I really want to make sure that we get as many questions that really need to be asked in this form as possible at this point. So just wanted to mention that for now. Um, and I think we do have one person up next. Okay. So I'm going to move on to the next.
Hi there. My question is coming from a teacher in the county who is high-risk myself. I have concerns, as do some of my colleagues, that potentially if we were to open in a phase two or a phase three opening, we would be entering into an environment that is essentially an unknown Petri dish. Obviously, there's lots of testing going on throughout the district, a lot of it's voluntary. But I would like to know what the school board's plans are in terms of ensuring teachers coming back to an in-person environment that we are not walking into the doors or into school buildings where individuals may be asymptomatic or may or may not have COVID. And that's one, as a high-risk individual, that's extremely concerning to me. And I have not heard any sort of voluntary testing or involuntary testing or any sort of testing strategy to help ensure that both teachers and students and administrators are safe in a phase two or phase three opening. And I'd like to hear what the school board's plans are for that.
As for, um, testing, I think I would have to defer to, uh, our central staff. I know that if you do have some concerns, you can check with our human relations department and see maybe the possibility of you being assigned to all virtual classes. That would be one possibility. The other might be even by checking with HR too. They might be able to let you know more about the testing possibility. I really don't know the answer to the question directly if that.
So the school board has no plans on doing any sort of testing like UVA is doing with all their incoming students to get kind of a baseline if there is COVID amongst the school?
No, we don't. Uh, in my understanding. Pardon? We are working with the health department. Uh, I, my understanding right now is.
That's not me. I'm sorry.
My understanding is that all teachers will be screened every day when they come in. That about, I think that is primarily a verbal screening. Are you feeling sick? Do you have a fever? I don't know whether there will be a fever check. That's not a particularly terrific indicator anyway. Um, and that anybody who is not feeling well or believes they've been exposed will be, um, tested by the health department. But in terms of a baseline testing of, you know, all 2,500 staff and 14,000, um, students, unfortunately, we don't have the resources to do that.
So no plans whatsoever?
We'll have masks for all teachers and, uh, we will have masks available for all students. Um, you know, we've had, I mean, the logistics of making this work is generally is, is challenging. We've had to chase down even face masks from four different vendors to make sure we have an adequate supply. Um, but in terms of your situation or many of our, many of our staff's situation where they are at high risk, where they have family members at high risk. Um, uh, you, you might, as Graham said, you may want to consider right now the, the all virtual option because I think you use the word guarantee or assurance. I, we can't assure that you won't be exposed. We're all at risk.
No, I get, I, I get that we're all at risk going to the grocery store or whatever. It seems to me as if I've heard no plans about how teachers and students come together in buildings on September 8th or whenever it might happen in the future and ensure that coming together is not a breeding ground for an essential outbreak. And that's what my concern is.
So I'm, I'm just gonna, I was trying to avoid really, uh, just wanted to let the school board, uh, take it from here. But thank you, Willie. There's an entire document that was developed by a task force as recommended by, by, uh, the Virginia Department of Health and also the Virginia Department of Education. Uh, we put together a, a, a task force. I think it's been fairly well communicated, um, that developed a return to school plan. And I would ask that you, um, when you have an opportunity, go through it and read it. Um, I think that it will help answer and address many of your concerns about the, um, assessments that we will be requiring and then also working on, um, providing for all of our, uh, staff of all kinds. Um, it is, in my opinion, on par with, um, with, uh, what UVA plans on doing. I have a child who is a student at UVA and I think many of the things that they're asking students to do are completely unrealistic. Um, we, on the other hand, are going to just, as we have decreased numbers, if we were to have an in-person start, uh, we would have decreased numbers of students and staff coming in. So I think we can do a good job of managing entry points for, um, employees coming back to the school. There, as you pointed out, um, this is, it would, you know, just my opinion, it would still be to many, uh, degrees an experiment. On American soil, there's been nothing like, uh, saying that students and staff should return to schools. There's, there's no, in my mind, there's no equivalent to that that has been tested as of yet. So in many ways, we are, uh, building a plan that's unlike any plan that we've ever had to put together before. I greatly appreciate, um, the support of our school board, the patience of our community, the patience of our parents, uh, our students and our, our families and certainly our staff. Um, I know you have a great deal of anxiety and we've done the best we can with all the guidelines and guidance that we have, uh, to produce this plan. And I really ask that everybody go to the Alamo County Schools page and, and read through it. There's a lot in there that I've heard, um, questions about in the chat document today as well as, um, some of the live questions like, like Willie was just asking. And those are great questions. Um, so, uh, I'm going to drop back out again, but I, um, I implore everyone to read this document. There was a, a lot of people got together to produce it and, uh, there was a lot of input from our, from every sector of our, um, employees. Thanks, Willie.
I, I have read it and I, I've read it actually a couple of times. And I just didn't hear the question answered around when we all initially gather with the number of asymptomatic people. And no, no sort of testing going on, how we're not developing some type of Petri dish? And that was my concern, but I think the question's been answered.
Yeah, even with, even, uh, Willie, even with the testing, I mean, you're still, you know, we're still,
it's, it's still going to be, uh, a trial. I mean, there's no doubt about it. So I definitely hear your anxiety, absolutely. But, um, under healthy employees or healthy staff, there's an outline, a statement of purpose, areas of focus, guiding questions. And then it talks about how we will, uh, ensure measures are in place to help keep employees as safe as possible. And I think the as possible is the caveat that, that you're concerned about. And I certainly am too. Uh, but here each require each employee to do self-assessment, um, practice in the workplace, promote social distancing. We're putting together all the, the best practices that we can. Um, but again, as, as you're saying, the caveat is, um, as safe as possible. And that's, that's the gray area. So I'm, I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, and there's things that could be done like pool testing so that we don't have to test every single person. I'm just concerned about everyone.
I'm afraid we need to move on. We have quite a few people still in the queue to, with hands raised who would like to ask questions. Um, and thanks so much, Willie. We really appreciate it. And I've, I've made notes from your question, um, so that we can make sure that those get answered as, as well as possible when we get to that, uh, as soon as possible. Um, so I think we've got time for about two more questions and Catherine Deetley is up next. Um, so I, I will turn it over to her.
I have two main questions. Should I ask them one at a time or just throw it all out there?
Yeah, we just, if, as, go ahead and, and ask one at a time and we will just try to keep it as brief as possible.
Okay. So the first question is about our school nurses. What are schools going to do when our school nurses are having to be out because they are sick? Or they are having to go in quarantine? Because talking with, with coworkers, we already know that the, the substitute, uh, nurses are not willing to go back into the schools to sub for when a school nurse is going to be out. And I don't think that responsibility should be put on the principal, the office staff or anything like that. So who is going to take over that, that nursing role should the nurse be out?
It's a great question. I mean, right now we have one nurse per school. Um, and this is something beyond my pay grade. I don't know the answer to that.
Right. Because you sort of eliminated my answer. I was thinking that the substitute teachers, I mean, substitute nurses would be able to fulfill that role in a way.
They're hard to find.
Right. If not, uh, that's something else that we'll have to look into and possibly back to you.
Thank you. Um, and then my second question is as, hold on, I have to close my. As a, uh, as a teacher in Alamo, I want nothing more than to go back to the classroom and be with my kids. I miss them. But as an educator, I am so scared about entering that classroom for two aspects. Fear of my health because with asthma and I get respiratory infections very easily. I'm considered high-risk and I know you said that those high-risk teachers can apply for virtual teaching, but that virtual teaching is only based on student needs. So there could be a high need, um, for teachers wanting to be virtual, but a low need for students. So therefore your teachers are kind of left out. Um, and I'm also concerned about going back into the classroom of the quality of instruction that I can provide for my students. Um, when I'm having to spend the day keeping them six feet apart or getting them to keep their, their masks on. I teach kindergarten and people applaud me for creativity and they're like, oh, you're a teacher, you're creative. You guys will figure it out. And whenever I've talked to somebody at a higher level, their response is usually, you'll figure it out, you can do this. But it's like, yeah, the creativity and the, the thinking through this can only go so far of, like with those safety strategies being put into place, like how are we going to provide a quality education for our students should we go back into the building? And then this week kind of leads to my last question. Of, schools are supposed to be places that are safe. How can we guarantee safety for our students and our staff if legally we have no right to know if a student has COVID? Cause I will tell you that we cannot always depend on students coming to school. Not ill, because I've had students in the past whose parents have given them Tylenol. Not ill, because I've had students in the past whose parents have given them Tylenol, so they won't have a fever for the school day. So it's this, I just, I don't feel safe going back to school right now. So, thank you.
Well, I don't think anyone, I don't think anybody thinks that this is an ideal situation for education. I mean, virtual or six feet apart with masks and small, you know, teachers roaming in the middle and high school, going from class to class. It's not ideal for anybody. Uh, it is, however, what we can do given our constraints. I, I don't know, I don't know where we are in terms of the tally of teachers who are interested in virtual. I know that we would, we're planning to use our best efforts to make sure everybody who was at high risk who could teach virtually, but I don't know. I don't think we have all the data yet on that.
Right, right.
I think the teacher surveys will do this, due tomorrow. It's my understanding.
I think we have time for one more question and I mentioned in the chat and I'll mention here now as well that um, I do ask for people, we, we really encourage you to go ahead and send any questions that you have that have not yet been answered or any comments, comments that you'd like to submit. Please feel free to do it via chat here or to submit it an email to me. And I did put my email in the, um, in the chat. Um, and that has gone out in the messaging for these town halls as well. So uh, we've got one more question coming up. Holly Faulkner.
Hi, thank you for taking my question.
Love your dog.
Oh, thank you. Um, I appreciate you guys taking my question. Um, so I'm a teacher and I was wondering, um, like with a tornado or fire drill, like there are drills in place for something. Um, and so I wanted to know what the drill was going to be for when someone tests positive. There has to be a system and I was hoping um, that we could get a concrete answer about that.
I know that um, like Dr. Bond was saying, that the health department would be able to step in and do some things related to what you were saying. I'm not sure what other things, I guess we'd have to work out some other methods or some other plans too. But I know that the health department will be taking at least some initiative and steps that we need to follow.
I think we also have in the plan, planning documents, if someone is sick or suspected to be sick, we have, will have more or less short-term quarantining areas in the schools where they will be taken out of the classroom or, or, or uh, for a period. Um, then the procedure would be, I mean, the real challenge is that even under the best cases, we're looking at testing results not coming back for a week to fourteen days. So, so in those situations where we have a suspected case, uh, the student or staff will be taken out of the room. We have protocols for shutting down individual schools uh, for a period of time. And you know, we really are gonna be, I, I know that there are more detailed procedures in place than I'm describing. But we have contemplated that. The rate limiting step in all of this from my perspective is the testing. If we could have better testing, we would know more immediately what to do and what Willie mentioned earlier. We could test everybody as they're walking in, at least in some uh, way or some fashion. But we will have to go on gross symptoms or testing, I mean, of family members if, if they will notify us of this. But there's no denying that um, schools are a place where people might get infected. I mean, they're not immune and, and anytime you have a concentrated group of people. We are working hard to minimize class sizes and interactions, but those measures are imperfect. And an earlier speaker was talking even about the ventilation systems. We're having to make plans based on the constraints that we have in terms of our buildings, testing, changing epidemiology in the community. And it is you all have made wonderful comments and we will do our best to answer them.
Right.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I think that's all the time we have. We actually have gone over uh, about a few minutes here, but um, this has been, I, I'm really delighted to see how many people um, are engaged and are here to participate in this. Um, so I'm really grateful to everyone and I, I extend my own personal thanks to you for being here. And um, I'll let uh, Kate Acoff and Graham Page kind of close this town hall down.
Thank you all for being here. You've asked extraordinarily uh, good questions uh, and have, you know, made me want to go back looking through these documents to see if I can find the answers to. I will say that if you were unable to speak on this one, we have a town hall tomorrow at two and then another one Monday at six. So you have two more bites of the apple. Graham and I won't be there, but you will have uh, other school board members at each of those meetings as well as Helen um, being the MC for the host.
Right. Alright, so in addition to what Kate has said, the only other thing that I can add in is again, to make sure that you check our website because we will be posting the latest information that we have on the website. And we do thank all of you for giving us so many thought-provoking ideas and letting us know how many things we still need to do and to be concerned with. You've really brought up some excellent points. And we also thank Dr. Dunn for setting this up, uh, for Ms. Collins and for Dr. Haas for being here. And also for our county IT staff for setting up the process. So again, thank you so much for participating in this town meeting.
Thank you. Thanks to Graham and Kate as well. Thanks so much.